I call to order the May 2022 Legislative Meeting of Media Borough Council. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a presentation that will begin momentarily. Before we get to the presentation, just some words of appreciation. Thank you to everyone, whether you voted, or you stood for election, or you were one of the folks that took an entire day to help make the machinery of our elections work. Thank you, thank you very much. Those who are paying close attention to our agenda will see that we have a presentation that was in the wings and now is here. So are you folks ready?
Yep. Just shuffling everything in order.
There we go.
Greetings, Town of Media, Pennsylvania, America's first fair trade town. It's something we're very proud of becoming in 2006. I've been on the committee since it began, and we have an ongoing commitment to educate and promote fair trade, which we're giving our annual awards for this year. So we're going to highlight some of the people that have become the forefront of our fair trade movement here in town, and we'd like to present these awards. Our first award is going to Vippi Lee, who has helped us through Brandywine, Penn State Brandywine, and we have really grown our fair trade campus program, and with the new addition of more space at Penn State Brandywine, Vippi really stepped up and has brought a lot of attention and a lot of students to town, and we really appreciate that. Oh yeah, the baskets. There's more prizes, right?
Should be you.
Thank you. Plenty more information about fair trade and the logos you look out for. Now, the next recipient is somebody that I've had the privilege of selling her products in my shop, and she's always maintained, when appropriate, fair trade products inside her products, where she makes a whole line of soaps under the name Nether Province Soaps, and locally made soaps, and over the years, she's always incorporated fair trade when it was appropriate, like fair trade olive oil. But Serene Penician is, oh, I did it wrong. I'll call you Sarah Baker instead, how about that? So, Serene, from Nether Province, so thank you for being a fair trade trooper through and through, and being one of the makers that we sell at our shop. Thank you. Sorry. Okay. Now, we're getting to our committee awards. Just make sure I got these in order, because we definitely want to honor, one of the bases of our fair trade town is our businesses, and it's really important, as a local business, that we acknowledge those businesses that really help us spread the word and give us a place to go and meet, and regularly are able to hand out our information and provide a home for us when we have our meetings in person, which is starting to happen more and more. And we'd love to honor Willow Culberson from Willow's Garden Cafe.
Thank you very much. You do a lot of hard work.
Thanks for helping us.
Basket.
Appreciate it. Basket, right? That's who keep me on task. Here, you get the one with the pine cones.
All right, thank you very much. Everybody has to participate to keep this going.
All right, thanks. Speaking of participation, our next recipient is our committee member superstar, Robin Kaufman. We really like to thank her for helping bring back our program into Media Elementary School. Actually, starting next week, we'll be doing our COCO presentation, very exciting, and we really appreciate your help of getting us back to it.
Thank you so much.
This is the last official basket. Our next two awards are going to be accepted on behalf of, by Ira. We're honored and privileged to have been involved with the fair trade movement for Media since 2006. Before that, there was only a few organizations that were working on fair trade, and Equal Exchange is actually one of those organizations, based on the West Coast, you know exactly where?
Boston, actually.
In Boston, oh, okay. Which is where the first fair trade conference that I attended was, in Boston, and Equal Exchange has always put out a good word and an honest assessment of what's really going on, especially with small farmers. And as our world gets bigger and bigger and bigger, we'd like to honor our historical award to Equal Exchange for really changing the direction and focusing in on fair trade.
They actually do have something in West Philly, but she couldn't make it. But we're going to, instead of giving them Equal Exchange products, like everybody else got, Equal Exchange chocolate, coffee, and tea, we're giving them some Senda fair trade soccer balls.
Who were the recipients of last year's award of fair trade. And last but not least, he's been mentioned by the town. Bruce Crother is the founder of Fair Trade Towns, from Garstang, England, and we're honoring Bruce Crother alone as a fair trade pioneer. He has connected us directly to the Fair Trade Towns system, and over the years, Bruce has worked directly with New Kofrodoa, Ghana, which has become indirectly the 1,000th fair trade town in the world. And because of our connection to the first fair trade town in the world, and our location is the first fair trade town in this hemisphere, in the Americas, we started a friendship triangle with Ghana, with New Kofrodoa, Ghana, where Bruce has also focused a lot of his work. And it's been really exciting to connect, and in the future, we'd love to see us model as much as we can about how we approach our friendship triangle from Media, Pennsylvania, and connect closer to New Kofrodoa, Ghana.
Yes, thank you. I don't know what we're giving Bruce yet, but part of the reason we did it now is because he just came out with this memoir called Not in My Lifetime. It's a really interesting read. This is a copy that came from Media Upper Providence Free Library, which I purchased and gave to them. Anyway, I really recommend everybody reading it. It's got Media in there a couple times. It talks about this fair trade triangle between Media, Garstang, and New Kofrodoa, which actually is the same triangle as the slave triangle, slave trade triangle. So it's not exactly reparations, but it's a chance to bring light to that and to try to, you know, make up a little bit, because now we're working on trying to have trade justice and try to have good working conditions and such. And also, so I've been a member of the committee since the beginning, and I've had the chance to take some trips, international trips, to fair trade conferences, and also a trip to Origin, which was Costa Rica, where there are some fair trade farming co-ops, and it's a really valuable thing. And we're talking now about, we're trying to work out a trip to Ghana, maybe in October, and we would love to have somebody from the Borough Council, or possibly Brittany, or, you know, an official, go to that. We're talking about, you know, the committee maybe having some funds to help that. So that's a discussion that you guys need to talk about, whether that's going to be okay. I don't know if that's something you want to talk about now or not, but Brittany asked us actually to bring it up during the meeting.
Brittany, so I understand that things are not always straightforward in the world of governance, and that you've had some conversations with our solicitor in connection with this. Do you mind jumping in at this point and letting us know what you've learned?
Sure. And so, I've spoken to Bob Scott about this because the fair trade committee had it approached maybe a couple months ago, Elizabeth had brought up the idea, and we certainly want to do everything above board. So we understand that it's an educational trip to learn about, you know, the trip of origin, and learn about fair trade and that whole...
It's really inspiring.
Right, yeah. But certainly, we're local governments. We have certain ethical concerns about taking gifts and what have you. So there is a, Bob had mentioned that there is an agency in the state that literally deals with this specifically, so it's the Pennsylvania Ethics Commission, and you can reach out to them and ask for a letter and opinion of whether or not this is an okay thing, just to make sure that everything is, you know, copacetic and above board and all that good stuff. So I had mentioned it to council members, I just wanted to have an open conversation to make sure folks are still interested in doing that before we actually have the solicitor, you know, take the time to do that. So wanted to, and the other piece of that is, if we do that, the letter also has to name who is interested in going, so that they can think through all of the ethical concerns of that particular council person or administrative person.
Sounds as if you're looking for some guidance as to whether or not there's somebody on council or part of the borough that is interested in taking such a trip.
Yes, yes.
If anybody's interested in taking one of these amazing trips, we would definitely want to have representation in Africa.
As an educator and as a member of council and as someone in the borough, I would be happy to go on this trip and get the opinion of the solicitor from the commission.
Yeah, and I've already communicated to Brittany my interest pending specific dates.
Sure, likewise.
Excellent. And I had said as well that if it makes sense and timing and all that, that I would be potentially interested, but I also have two little kids, so.
All coordination aside, we would just love to be there in some kind of representation. You know, as much as I would love to do all these different things, you know, I got to be at work too. So I totally understand if it can't happen, especially there's a whole nother level since this is government.
So it looks as if we have three names to communicate. Quick question for you, Drew. You've mentioned accurately that Media is the first fair trade town in America.
Correct. In the Americas.
In the Americas.
Both hemispheres, yes.
What is the first fair trade city?
First fair trade city in the United States would have been, was it LA or Chicago?
I thought it was San Francisco.
San Francisco was about to declare, and funny enough, we beat them, and then they withdrew.
Right, they got cold feet at that point.
They withdrew, they refocused, and they waited a while until they declared. I don't remember exactly when, but I don't remember the exact circumstances, but because Media became the first fair trade town, San Francisco said, hmm, small town, how can we work with this town? And they realized that one of their primary founders, Hal Tausig, who's really the true father of fair trade towns here in the United States, from Media, Pennsylvania, communicated with them, and they came up with the fair trade town system and approach for the United States through that method.
16 years, still going strong.
Yep, still going.
Thank you for all the support that the borough's given.
The ongoing support from the borough, without that, it wouldn't be like this.
Keeps you in banana costumes.
Yes, no banana costumes.
Up until this year.
That was special for last year.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Well, now we have the opportunity to take care of some housekeeping matters. We have a couple of sets of meeting minutes, one from our April workshop meeting and one from our council meeting from this past month. Do I motion to approve the April 7, 2022 workshop meeting minutes as submitted?
Is there a move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the April 7, 2022 council workshop meeting minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. The second set of meeting minutes is, as I mentioned, the council meeting from this past month. Do I motion to approve those as submitted?
Is there a move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no call for discussion, all those in favor of approving the April 21, 2022 council meeting minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. All right, now we have the opportunity to go to public comment and approve to the floor. As always, we have two main ways of doing that. One is electronically, by email, comments@mediaborough.com, or if you are here with us, you can come to the microphone and let us know what's on your mind. First, as always, we'll take any email comments or questions. Karen?
Yes, I have one from Jim Zieglehofer, which I think we all know as Ziggy, West Third Street. The Veterans Legacy Project would like to invite all Media Borough residents to the 2022 Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 30, at 10:00 a.m. on State Street. It concludes with a ceremony at the Delaware County Courthouse on Front Street. The observance will include Penn Crest High School band, various veteran organizations, various speakers, and I hope I said our name right, Ashley Rice, who will perform several patriotic songs. And if it rains, the ceremony will be held at the theater. Ziggy hopes to see everyone there.
Thank you, Ziggy. Anybody else? Any other electronic emails?
No, I'm sorry, no.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, anybody who's present, please come to the microphone, tell us who you are, where you live, what's on your mind.
Terry Rumsey, 342 West Fourth Street, here in the borough. Firstly, I would just like to offer to one of the attendees, Michael Jordan, an offer of some mutual peer support from a distraught 76ers fan. Michael, you're going to have to come out of retirement, at least you dive on a loose ball. Thank you. I'm also the co-chair of Keep Media Green. I wanted to thank two borough employees, Karen Rapinoe and Dave Chacony, for their help with the Keep Media Green Benefit Concert on Earth Day in the community center with the legendary folk musician John McCutcheon. Karen guided us through all the administrative steps. Dave spent a very long day and night helping set up, and we really transformed the community center into a professional concert venue. So we were there very late on Earth Day night, and Dave was there, and we really appreciate that. The next day was our Keep Media Green Earth Day Work Day, and 125 folks did a lot of work in parks and cleaning up streets, cleaning up vacant lots. I would just like to thank Mike Green and the Public Works crew. They helped us plant three trees in Hootman Park, a white oak, a swamp oak, and an American holly, provided the trees, the soil, came and fenced it. Keep Media Green volunteers just did the grunt labor. And finally, thank Councilman Paul Robinson and Councilwoman Liz Remain for volunteering that day, and I know Mark Pecoff signed up, but he was punished and had to go to San Francisco for a wedding. So thank you all. We appreciate the support that Borough gave to Keep Media Green Earth Day.
Thank you. Anybody else who should come to the microphone?
Hi, Erica Berman, 659 Baltimore Avenue. I know I've been up here before, talking about the environmental impacts of plastic pollution and the health impacts, and also the benefits of placing a plastic bag ordinance. So I'm here today to speak in support of, Mike, Mark is going to talk about this later, but presenting the ordinance to the solicitor for review. The EAC has spent many, many months working on this ordinance, pulling together best practices from local cities and states, also working with different environmental groups for review, like Penn Environment and Clean Air Council, but we also curated it specifically to the media community by incorporating media businesses' input. So I'm very proud of where the ordinance, this draft, stands, and I look forward to hearing feedback, and if you have any other further questions for me, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Does anybody else who should address council at this time? Seeing that there are no takers, we'll move along then to the Borough Manager's Report. Ms. Forman?
Good evening. I do not have anything to report.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions or comments for our manager? Seeing that there are none, we'll move along then to Mr. Mattson, our engineer. Mr. Mattson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I submitted my written report, but there are a few things I just wanted to provide some updates on. I was able to get ahold of the project managers at PennDOT. Again, the road resurfacing project is on schedule. They held their bid opening in April. They have a pre-construction meeting in May. So I'm delighted that this project is on schedule, which means that our projects along Baltimore Pike will follow shortly there after the paving. So there was a series of things that really needed to happen correctly, and the stars have aligned, so PennDOT is right on schedule, so it's great news. Other than that, unless there's any questions, I'll conclude my report.
Kevin, by any chance, do you know what they're going to be doing when they repave Baltimore Avenue? It's a significant roadway, and are they going to close it down? Are they going to do it at night, or not sure?
Mostly, it will occur at night, that's right. So again, those crews probably work remarkably fast. They'll probably bring in two separate crews, and it could be a matter of days, they'll do a complete milling, and then the overlay will happen. Surprisingly, when they did, again, PennDOT repaved considerable portions of Baltimore Pike in the eastern section of Delaware County, and also Lane-Sun Avenue, and it really is amazing. Once they get started, the crew comes in, it's like an army. The challenge is going to be where they stage the equipment. Again, so there's a lot of milling equipment, there's dump trucks, there's a lot of lighting equipment that has to be stored places, so we'll be attending the pre-construction meeting to work out the exact logistics so that we're not interfering with the regular day-to-day operations of the borough. But it's an intensive project.
Wow, thank you.
Any other member of council have any questions for our engineer? Seeing that there are none, we'll move along then to the solicitor's report. Carol Ewald is sitting in for Bob Scott this evening. Welcome, Mr. Ewald.
Thank you. Bob didn't send any additional report, we'll just have to note for the public and for the record that council will meet for an executive session after this meeting to discuss litigation matters.
Thank you, Mr. Ewald. Does any member of council have any questions for Mr. Ewald at this time? Seeing that there are no questions, move along then to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Brian. Our two new police officers have been sworn in and are on the streets. Last month, we had 953 complaints. I'll read a couple of them of interest. There were 30 alarms, domestic 14, medical emergencies 41, pretty high number, only one robbery, first one of the year, and traffic accidents were 27. I want to say something else about the parade next week, or week after next. We've invited the Ukraine church in Swarthmore. Pastor Dan is going to be there, he's going to speak a little bit about their situation, and some of their other people at the church are going to join us, so that'll be a real special day, on top of everything else that we do. So, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any member of council have a question for our mayor or a comment for our mayor? Well then, we'll move along then to our council committee reports. We will start from my right, moving to the left. Councilman Robinson, properties, public works, and fire.
And good evening, excuse me. With regards to fires, I do every month, anybody who's interested in serving with the fire company, they're always looking for volunteers, stop on down to the firehouse, I'm sure they'll be able to put you to work. The chief did provide me a report for the month of April. We had 23 fire calls and 191 EMS calls, and two significant intergovernmental municipal working together. We had to go out to Thornbury for a fire, as well as Upper Providence, one was on April 3, and the other one was on April 11. There's also, as I'm sure you've seen in the newspaper, some of the concerns with regards to Chester Keystone and the EMS. Our fire company, as well as our public safety and fire are all working on that. We hope we can come to some sort of a resolution, but I'm going to say be prepared, it may be at a cost to the borough residents. So, one other little reminder that I was asked to bring up to our residents is on trash pickup, we would ask everyone to use a trash can. Highway, your public works is starting to notice that people are just putting out a plastic bag at night. I can understand the logic if you're a small home or something like that, but we have a lot of critters around town, and between when you put it out at 6, 7 o'clock at night, and they come by at 6, 7 o'clock in the morning, the critters have a heyday, and it's all over the place, and it can just cause issues. So simply, you know, put it inside of a trash can, that would be greatly appreciated. With regards to legislative items, first on my agenda is referencing a proposal for M&amp;G Engineering Associates for Ridge and Olive Street. For those who have been keeping in tune with what's going on there, we had gone out and we'd been working with a different engineering firm. To be very candid, at some point, their costs seemed to be very, very high for what was the work that we were going to be, wanted to do, and most importantly, it was getting to be significantly out of what we had budgeted. So with, our engineer had recommended that we outsource this to a engineering firm that specializes in these type of stormwater projects. So I would like to make a motion that we enter into a proposal with M&amp;G Engineering Associates, the amount of $34,500 for the redesign project for Ridge and North Olive Street Stormwater Project, and that's in the form of a motion.
Motion's been made, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Seeing no call for discussion, all those in favor of approving, of the borough entering into an agreement with MG Engineering Associates with regard to the redesign of the Ridge and Olive Stormwater Project in the amount of $34,500, please say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Next on my agenda is to authorize our engineer, as well as our solicitor's office and manager, to advertise for bids for CDBG State Street project. For those that may not know, this is the project that would go from Lemon Street down to Baltimore Avenue on the north side, going down along Glen Providence Park, to put in lighting as we have on State Street, as well as sidewalks, and just make it more accessible and more pleasant to get from the quote "business district" down to the park. I think it would be great, so I'm looking forward to that, and it is, a lot of it will be funded through a county grant, so I'd make the motion to reauthorize our engineer, solicitor, and manager to advertise for bids for the CDBG State Street project.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
There is. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing no call for discussion, all those who favor authorizing our engineer to advertise for bids for the CDBG State Street project, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
I'm sorry. Next on the agenda is, again, to authorize our engineer, solicitor, and manager to advertise for bids for our Olive and Jefferson Street Stormwater Project. Once again, for those that may not be aware, it is, as stormwater, as much as it is our clean water, trying to make what's leaving borough streets a little bit cleaner before it hits our streams, is a project that we've been working on. It's going to be, actually, I like to call it a "toofir." It's going to be some stormwater, as well as some traffic calming, so it should be a significant project. So I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
There is. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no call for discussion, all those in favor of authorizing our engineer to advertise for bids for the Olive and Jefferson Street Stormwater Project, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. To speed things along, for items four, five, and six, all these were put out to bid, all of these projects, we received numerous responses to our bids, and as you will see on the agenda, the low bidder for items four, five, and six were all Ocean Construction LLC. So I will now make separate motions, so I'll make a motion, we award the bid to Ocean Construction LLC for Phase 2 of the Armory Maintenance Project. For those that are aware, it's an old we're, it's an old building. The borough owns it. Where Trader Joe's is, it is our responsibility, meaning the boroughs, to maintain the exterior part of the building. We did Phase 1 last year, was extremely successful, helped stop a lot of the leakage in our Veterans Museum, as well as in Trader Joe's. This is the next phase of working on the handicapped ramp and a couple of other areas of the Armory property. So that is in a form of a motion.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no call for discussion, all those in favor of awarding a bid to Ocean Construction LLC for the second phase of the Armory Maintenance Project as outlined by Councilman Robinson, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Next on the agenda is I'll make a motion to award to Ocean Construction LLC for the borough's roads and highway maintenance. To clarify that a little bit more, our highway crew does the vast majority of maintenance on our roadways. The Ocean Construction would only come in when there are times of significant depth, so areas that you would see that you would need to have reinforced walls and things of that nature during the construction project that our team just is not a licensed for, and we do not have the staff to do it. So these would be for significant projects that are outside of what our Public Works Company would do. So that is in a form of a motion as well.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no call for discussion, all those in favor of awarding the bid for borough roads and highway maintenance as outlined by Councilman Robinson to Ocean Construction LLC, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
And I'll make a motion that we enter into an agreement where we'll award the bid to Ocean Construction LLC for our sidewalk maintenance, and this would be sidewalks that are owned by the borough, and that is in the form of a motion.
Is there a second on the motion? There is a second on the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no call for discussion, all those in favor of awarding a bid for sidewalk maintenance of borough-owned sidewalks to Ocean Construction LLC, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and the next two are getting rid of some used equipment. By Pennsylvania law, we are required to put any, anything that is owned or any asset of the borough out to bid. We put these out on bid prime?
Munisabid.
Munisabid, the other one. And pretty nice, it's one of the few times I get to say I'm a revenue source this month. So I would like to make a motion that we pass Resolution 2022-38 for the sale of a 2005 Kubota to Gamble Township for $15,900.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Hearing no call for discussion, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2022-38, which would approve the sale of 2005 Kubota with attachments to Gamble Township in the amount of $15,900, please say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
And then last on the agenda is the sale of, or I'd like to make a motion that we pass Resolution 2022-39 for the sale of a 2001 Sterling trash pickup truck to Philip Swink, I think it is, in the amount of $6,551. So that is in the form of a motion.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
There is. Any discussion on the motion?
For sure, it's Swink, not Swank or Swell.
Swink.
Swink, okay, there we go. Thank you.
Philip.
What one else?
Sorry for being stupid.
I'm surprised it didn't go to a local government. I really am. Unless he's a private hauler, I guess.
Motion's been made. It has been seconded. Is there any, any other call for discussion or question? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2022-39, which would approve the sale of a 2001 Sterling trash truck to Philip Swink in the amount of $6,551, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions or comments for Councilman Robinson at this time? We'll move along then to personnel. Councilwoman Joy Washington.
Thank you very much. As we discussed at the May workshop, we're going to discuss the end of, on the resignation of Kathy LaRusso from the Historic Archives Commission. I'd like to present that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made. It has been seconded, I assume, with regret.
Yes, with regret.
Any discussion or comment concerning the motion before I call it?
Just that Kathy has served the borough for a very long time, and has been a very effective sort of professional volunteer for the borough on a number of different commissions. So, good for her. Thank you very much.
I saw Kathy on the way over here. She had a big smile. In thinking about her fine years of service to the borough.
Yes.
All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor of accepting with regret the resignation of Kathy LaRusso from the Historic Archives Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. And one of my final updates is the Resolution Number 2022-40, the appointment of Evelyn Blair to the Historic Archives Commission for an unexpired term expiring 12/31/22, and I'm presenting this in the form of a motion.
I will second that.
Motion's been made, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no call for discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2022-40, which will appoint Evelyn Blair to the Historic Archives Commission for a term that would expire at the end of this year, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Any member of council have any questions or comments for Councilwoman Washington? Hearing none, we'll move along then to the Media Business Authority, Vice President Councilwoman Romaine.
President, I don't have any agenda items. I did just want to flag that the Media Business Authority is having a night to honor the service of Patrick and Jessie from the Media Theater on Tuesday, June 7, at the Town House. There'll be live music. There will be fun. Tickets are on sale now on the Media Business Authority's website. You can find the link on social media, but I would encourage everyone to consider going. There will be a donation made in Jessie and Patrick's name to an organization of their choice, but it'll be a really nice event. So I hope that everyone considers being able to come out.
Nice, thank you.
That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Any member of council have a question or comments for Vice President Romaine at this time? Hearing none, we'll move along then to my report, Community Development and Historic Architecture Review Board. I do not have any announcements, but I do have one action item. It is a resolution. This is to authorize the submission of a RACP grant application, business plan for the Plum Street Mall project. We've been talking about this fairly consistently over the past couple of months. We have an opportunity to transform Plum Street Mall into, a portion of Plum Street Mall into Plum Street Park, and we have received a considerable amount of money to do that. Part of that money is from the state in the form of a RACP grant. I always forget what that stands for. There you go. And so this is kind of a housekeeping matter to keep that on track. So I make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Oh, sorry. You didn't make a big deal about.
There's a chocolate in the way.
There. Now it's special. All those in favor of the resolutions, say aye.
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 Opposed? The resolution has passeded, has passed.
That's all I got. Unless there are any questions from me, we'll move along to Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Few announcements from REC. The summer camp is sold out. All the weeks are filled, thanks to President Johnson and his staff. So be a lot of interesting activities for summer camp. Movie nights, tentatively June 3, which is the same night as the school's picnic, that's a Friday night, and they are trying to get Sing 2 as the movie. Hopefully that'll happen. Then July 9 and August 13 are the other movie nights. Those are Saturdays, and the movies are to be determined, so we'll find out what's going on then. REC is going to get flower tickets this year, flower show tickets. That is from June 11 to the 19. I think things are different this year in that they're not timed, so I believe if you get a ticket, you can go anytime during that period. The tickets are $36 each, and you can contact Paula if you're interested in that. Unfortunately, the tea at the Gifford-Risley House has been kind of postponed, so we'll try to do that again, but things didn't work out for the 21st for that one. And then upcoming events, we have the 4th. We will be back on Verrill Field on the 4th in that morning, and I'll give more details as that gets closer. And then hopefully REC is going to also sponsor the Halloween Parade. And I know Liz has been in touch with the people from Town Talk, so over the next few weeks, we'll try to get that, get things together on that, but hopefully the borough will be able to sponsor at least some version of the Halloween Parade on the usual time we do it this Saturday before Halloween. Other than that, I have a brief announcement from Public Safety. As Councilman Robinson said, there are things going on in the EMS system that may affect the borough, and we do have a Public Safety meeting next week, so hopefully the chief will be able to update us and find out where we are with that. But things are kind of going as they were with Fire, in that we may have to resort to paid EMS people some point down the line. So stay tuned for the developments of that. And I have two items that are legislative, the agreement with LexiPaul for the Pennsylvania State Accreditation Service. We had talked about this at workshop a few weeks ago, and I make a motion that we go into the agreement with LexiPaul for the PA State Accreditation Service for our police department.
Second.
Motion's been made. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Seeing no call for discussion, all those in favor of a borough entering into an agreement with LexiPaul for Pennsylvania State Accreditation Service for its police, for our police department, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
And the other item is to approve the mass gathering permit for the annual Memorial Day Parade. This will be on Monday, May 30, beginning at 10:00 a.m. I don't have the details as far as the takedown, but it's the usual time for the parade, and as the mayor said, it's going to be an interesting event. So I move that we pass the mass gathering permit for the Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 30, beginning at 10:00 o'clock.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
There is. Is there any discussion on the motion? So I'll then move for approval, a vote on approval of the mass gathering permit application for Memorial Day Parade, as previously discussed by the mayor and by Ziggy. So we better say aye on this one. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, on the council, have any questions for Councilman Boyer at this time? Seeing that there are none, we'll move then to Councilman Williamson for his report, Finance, Library, and Shade Tree.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple announcements. First on the library. I told my colleagues in the workshop, and I'll tell the general public, the library sale, which is one of its most important, it is its most important fundraiser annually, was really back to full tilt this spring. For the spring sale, they expect to gross over $24,000 as a result of the sale, which is a good year. They sometimes do a little bit better, but it was a very good sale. Just as an personal anecdote, I went to Marple Libraries book sale last week because I like, because I'm nut, and I like to go to these things, but oh my goodness, what a disappointment compared to media. I'm sorry, not being parochial or anything. It's just media is amazing compared to what other public libraries put together. So thank you all who went and bought books. The last thing on the library is, this will be my last report as the library liaison. I've been doing this for six years, and it's time for me to pass the baton, so I've asked my fair colleague, Mr. Pekoff, to do so, and he's grateful, he's graciously accepted. So from now on, the report from the library will be coming from my left. Now, on to finance. The first thing I'd like to do is ratify the payment of April's bills. From the General Fund, we drew $277,187.19. From the Recreation Fund, $3,755.85. From the Liquid Fuels Fund, zero. From the Capital Fund, $121,079.50. I move approval and ratification of April's bills.
Is there a second on the motion?
A second.
There is. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no call for discussion, all those in favor of approving the borough's, the payment of the borough's bills for this past month, April of 2022, from the general recreation and capital funds in the amounts as outlined by Councilman Williamson, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all. I know it was tough. Okay, some finance announcements. We had a Finance Committee meeting, really a fascinating one, a couple of days ago, but just the short summary is that, as has been true for the past couple of years, the budget is well ahead of itself right now. Right now, we're about $1.7 million, you know, revenue over expenses, which is good, but we always have a big bill for our pensions in the fall. So that sort of tends to correct itself, but right now, we see no big problems with the budget. And one number that's been very satisfying for us to see is that parking meter revenue, which is sort of a general indication of economic activity downtown, has rebounded tremendously. It's almost back to pre-pandemic levels, and even better, it's tracking on our proposed budget numbers, which were, I thought personally were aggressive, but seem to be doing very well. So well done, media economy. The last thing I'd like to mention is really more of an announcement and also a sort of question or a sense of counsel, if you don't mind. Recently, Brittany Foreman and I participated in a Heritage Park meeting, and an exciting thing has come about, and that is that the NCAA, NAACP chapter, I'm so sorry, the local chapter would like to do a Juneteenth event at Heritage Park. Unfortunately, because of a conflict at Rose Street Park on the actual 19th, they're going to do it on the 18th, which is Saturday instead of Sunday. But nonetheless, I think it's an exciting thing to be happening here, particularly because if it's successful, they'd like it to be an annual event. And I can also report that our media archives have been toiling away and expect to have by then the scanned records of three local families completed and on offer at the park that day. But in any case, we expect that the organizers of the park event might come and request some modest support from the Borough Council, and I hope that we would be supportive of it. And I just wanted against a sense of you, you can nod your head, you shake, whatever, whether you think it's a good idea or bad to, you know, we often do things like the AM prom at Pencrest High School, for instance. We've been supporting it for years. It would be a similar kind of thing. Okay?
Good.
Okay. Well, we expect we might get some sort of formal proposal from the organizers, so we don't expect the scale to be, you know, huge. Right? Okay. Thank you all very much, and that concludes my report.
Are there any questions or comments for Councilman Williamson? Seeing none from council at this time, we'll move along then to Environmental Advisory Council, Councilman Pekoff.
Thank you. We had an EAC meeting last week on the 12th, and I want to give you an update and tell you a little bit about the meeting, and then go off task a little bit before I get to the ordinance. B-City update, the $100 fee has been paid from the EAC budget. I want to thank Brittany and the staff for helping us to maneuver that with Addie Janela to try to get that going. The application's complete. It's been accepted. We should know in one to three weeks formally that we've been accepted, and I assume I will let you know that next month. Tomorrow, May 20, at 10:00 a.m., is the annual Bike to Work Day, sponsored by the Delaware County Municipal Transportation Authority. It's in front of the courthouse. If you ride your bike to work and you post something with the hashtag #BikeDelco, or Bike to Work, I think, you'll be qualified for a $50 Wawa gift certificate. And I know all of this because as part of my work with Day Without a Car at the behest of Councilperson Washington, I met with Tracy Barisaviches, the Executive Director at the Delaware County MTA. She's very enthusiastic about the idea of the Day Without a Car. We're getting our plans together. We're targeting a Wednesday in August with a culmination at Dining Under the Stars. So I'll be reaching out to Dave Fairman, as well as Liz, to try to work with the MBA. Tracy's going to help us work with SEPTA, and we're going to try to get something small together for that event, and then potentially build it up in the coming years. And that's where that stands. Now, I have one order of business. It's an ordinance for the solicitor to review and draft for the regulation of single-use plastic bags and single-use plastic straws in the borough. And just as some background, Eric I know mentioned that members of the committee have been working on this for a couple of years at this point. They actually sought out other municipalities ordinances, and it has They actually sought out other municipalities' ordinances, and at the behest of council in November, before any of us, the three of us who are new took our seats, they requested the EAC to contact local businesses and get their feedback. So councilwoman Romaine and myself, we worked together to get the MBA, the EAC, working on this, and we wanted to make sure that we had those questions answered. We had a couple of sessions, we had a lot of good feedback, and that will be, you know, that's something that's built into our ordinance. At Workshop, some questions came up that I want to make sure that I answer for you. Some folks asked about a particular spot in the ordinance that has chain stores charging fees and how that will be enforced. The background to that is that bigger stores are used to charging these fees. Plastic bag ordinances have been put in place in a lot of other towns, cities, and even states. New Jersey goes into effect, or just went into effect. The enforcement plan is not determined yet. The priority is to make sure that the transition is easy for our local businesses. Now, initially, the fee was there for all businesses, and at the behest of MBA and the membership of the local businesses, we took that out. They were concerned about that, and we heard them, we removed that. And we left it in, however, for the big chains. Dave Fairman will be looking into that. It is an optional thing for our local businesses, for them to recoup the cost of any more expensive bags that they need to purchase. And the question was raised about why this was coming from the EAC. EAC is charged with protecting the environment by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and was created for that purpose by the Borough, so it is appropriate. I also have information that I just want to share with everybody about a study that Penn Environment did in the last several years. They identified microplastics in local waterways, either fibers that came from synthetic fibers, filaments such as fleece, fishing lines, baling twine, other fragments from rigid plastics like poly styrene, clear plastic containers, or, and this is the one that I think is the one of note, film that came from plastic bags or other food wrappers. They also looked for microbeads. The good news for our local waterways, there were no microbeads, but in four Delaware County waterways, Crum Creek, Ridley Creek, Stony Creek, and I hope I get this right, Mukinapatis Creek?
Mukinapatis.
Mukinapatis, I'm sorry, thank you. In Springfield down to the Delaware River, all three of the other types of plastics were found, fibers, fragments, and the film from plastic bags. So it is close to home. It is something that definitely is impacting us. So I would ask council to authorize to have our solicitor review and draft an ordinance based on what EAC has delivered for the regulation of single-use plastic bags and single-use plastic straws in the Borough. And I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion's been made. I have a question for our solicitor. Should the motion be for review, drafting, and advertising? Or are we getting ahead of ourselves with advertising?
I think you'll want to take a look at the ordinance after Bob finishes working on it. So I think probably there's a next step, which would be advertising.
Sure, okay. So the motion is as it was?
Yeah.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
There is. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no call for discussion, all those in favor of authorizing our solicitor to review and draft an ordinance for the regulation of single-use plastic bands, bags, and single-use plastic straws in the Borough, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay.
No.
Motion passes, six to one.
Councilman, do you mind repeating the four creeks?
Yes. Crum Creek, please say that.
Mukinapatis.
Thank you. Ridley Creek and Stony Creek. I have a whole list of others from Chester and other counties as well, if anyone's interested.
Since we are in the Ridley Creek system, it's surprising that our streams don't have the same stuff.
And there's no interceptor in Ridley. There's no sanitary sewer, so that's usually the most pristine.
Yeah, it's there. And one thing that I did not mention earlier, I meant to mention this, about the Sunoco funds. The ad hoc committee will be meeting in early June. I expect to be bringing recommendations in July, based on what our committee comes up with for that, for the Sunoco check. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any member of council have any questions or comments for Councilman Pekoff at this time? Seeing that there are none, move along then to public comment and proceed to the floor. Karen, have we received any e-messengers since the start of tonight's proceedings?
No, I have nothing further.
All right. If there's anybody, anyone present who wishes to address council, please come to the microphone and tell us who you are, where you live, and what's on your mind.
I'm Willow Coberton, as most of you know. I have a lot of boots to the ground. I've had a business in media for over 15 years, Coffee Corner and Garden Cafe. A lot of feedback to what I'm hearing today, which is mostly positive. We are having a lot more traffic in town, I'm very thankful for that. You know, we're a bit more alive, the courthouse is opening up, we're getting more jurors out, us who are restaurants are finally going like this a little bit, breathing. So I'm very thankful for that. I would like to know a little bit more communication, because we are boots to the ground, and we are cafe, everybody sits around and talks. I don't always know what's going on. Like the Memorial Parade, I just now found out. And I wish we could like somehow also tell our customers that a little bit more in advance. And that's mostly because we're coming out of COVID, and a lot of us are confused and not quite knowing, you know, which direction our thing is going.
Would Willow be automatically have an email list for the newsletter, or because she's a resident of Upper Prado, but a business owner here, might she have not be on the list? Because Willow, you know, every month, we have this incredibly long list of stuff that comes out in this email, which would, you could basically print it, I guess. I mean, you know? But I don't know if you even get it.
I don't. And to be honest with you, I don't check my email half.
Well, what are we going to do, print it and hand it to you?
Anything to do with downtown, maybe give us a flyer saying, you know, it's back, you know, Memorial Parade is coming in a week and a half. And that way, we can also tell everybody who's sitting around talking about it, what's coming back, what's not. And that would also help to get people out in the streets to, you know, stand there. My Uncle Joe was a big member of it for the longest time, the Veterans Parade, and a lot of us are just confused. And since we're the ones who are answering everybody's questions, you know, it would be nice to like a little more advance notice. But a lot of my customers are retired, who aren't necessarily internet savvy, shall we say, you know, 50 and above. So that would also help a little bit if we had more notice, just to let them know. Like the library did a fantastic job with that. I knew over a month in advance that it was coming up. I told people about it. They got excited about the library being open again, going there, because it's almost like a community center. People stand there, like sit outside while they're waiting for somebody else. So that was just there, if there's any way we can communicate a little bit more in advance. And secondly...
Wait, Willow, I can, I can just, just before you move on to your second point, are you on the Media Business Authority?
No.
List either? Okay, so...
Oh, no, yes, 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 David, yes.
Yes.
I get emails.
Yeah, so, so, so one, we should...
I'm very happy with him. He is very good at communicating and keeping up with us, and he pops in our cafe and gets a cup of coffee, says, "How you girls doing?", you know?
Yeah, so, so one thing is, I know a lot of that information is communicated directly to the businesses as they're happening. The Borough Newsletter comes out once a month, Dave communicates, you know, as needed. The other thing I would encourage you to do, if you're not on email, is if you're on social media, the Borough and the Business Authority do a very good job advertising, talking about upcoming events on social media. I know, I haven't looked at the April report for the Borough social channels, but traditionally, the Instagram tends to be the most interactive. If you just have a few minutes to scroll, that's another way to look at that. But, you know, what I'd encourage you to consider is, Media Business Authority is coming up with a committee structure. One of the committees that they're coming up with, and, you know, I've spoken to your sister about this specifically, and asked her to join, is one of those committees is going to be a restaurant committee that's going to be specifically made up of businesses, restaurants, that will be able to influence what the Business Authority does, events in town, and so forth, from that specific point of view. And certainly, we would love to understand, like, what is the best way to communicate with you, I think that from a Business Authority perspective, but just as a, you know, from the Borough's perspective too. Clearly, you know, email doesn't, doesn't work, what does? So, you know, I'd love for you to get involved so that we can work on things together, so that way, these things, you're able to plan into it correctly, absolutely.
Right now, flyers are working the best for us, because we just hand it to them or just have it laying on the counter, and people pick it up and they read it, and they go, "Okay." And then someone else is like, "No way, really?" And they go, "No."
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly consider something like that in the future, like, let's talk, let's talk more directly offline about it, absolutely.
And then the last thing is, I am 100% on board with making everything environmental for the restaurants. I grew up in San Francisco, for me, it's already familiar. I do know straws, those are the only backlash that we have already experienced. We've already moved on to all paper, go containers, bags, straws, on our own, we've decided that. And everything has gone well, but straws. I don't know what it is that they're always resisting that one item. And I even tell the silly story about, you know, the turtle, they got up its nose, and... So if we had like a small grant or something to give to restaurants to wear, or a brochure that explains why it's a better idea than not even use straws, or B, why we all decided paper straws is why we're all going for against what our customers are feeling.
Yeah, I can speak to that too, from the communications perspective. I mean, Mark can give you the scientific reason, but, but one of the things that I think, maybe we've talked about in past meetings, but we haven't with this, is, you know, if and when this ordinance passes, there is a communication execution plan that's supporting it. So it's not just going to poof, you know, one day get voted on by council, and then you'll just like learn through osmosis. One of the things we want to emphasize is that upon a potential vote to, to adopt the ordinance, and the actual beginning of the ordinance will be several months, and then the enforcement might even be after that. So, so all that will be figured out. But I say this, that in the time when, between when council potentially votes on this and it comes into, into play, there's a whole communication plan that will go around with it. So we'll be educating our residents, our visitors, our businesses, exactly what the ordinance is, why the ordinance exists, why it's important. And the other piece that, that we haven't really mentioned is that we're working with a couple of different organizations in town, I think Transition Media is one. But what we're, what we are currently putting together, and hopefully will have ready to go out the second something potentially gets adapted, maybe later this summer, is resources for all the businesses. So specifically, where you could go to find a compliant straw, or compliant bag, or whatever that might be, so that you're not just like left out on your own, and then hopefully there'll be enough time, there should be enough time if we, if we write the ordinance correctly, for you to be able to order into those dry goods and get them in time for when the ordinance would actually come into effect. So there are a couple of different things in play, I think that's a great point, but part of the communication plan is going to be for you to be able to speak to those talking points to your customers too.
That would be great.
Yeah, yeah, so we're working on the plan right now, but one of the reasons that we had the focus group, and then ultimately the meeting with the businesses directly, is to understand some of these concerns, that we can incorporate them into a communications plan, so we can address them head-on, not adopt something and then not know how to speak to it. So like, this type of feedback is really, really great, but I think that all this will be incorporated on it. Mark, I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, I just want to, I want to thank you for adding to the feedback that we've had. I've already written down to bring to what the EAC, to the subcommittee, the issue of the straws. You know, I've been, I've been to New York, I was in San Francisco a couple of weeks ago, and, and they have their, you know, their programs in place where they have a sign-up explaining it, and that's a part of the communication plan. But, but hearing from you is very valuable in a lot of ways for me. And I'll bring it to the committee, and I'm sure we'll include that. One thing to let you know as well, and then everyone else, while we were holding these sessions, we put together an FAQ, frequently asked questions from business folks in, in the Borough, so that we can answer those questions. That was really one of the main things we wanted to provide. We want to work with you to help you be successful. This is not being put in place, you know, as sort of a slap on the wrist, and I'm actually proud that our Borough went and asked the businesses for their input. We heard time and time again from anybody who's enacted one of these, that that was a mistake that they made. So thank you for your feedback, and if you have any other feedback, don't hesitate to let us know. Because, you know, we want to make sure that it works for our environment as well as keeps our businesses on their feet.
I'm sorry, just to add to that, Mark, there currently on the Borough website today, there is a page that has resources, it has that FAQ posted, as well as some other information, including a form for anyone, but I think businesses specifically to fill out if they have feedback or questions. So that's actually up on, on the website now, in anticipation of this ordinance potentially being passed at some point later this year.
Yeah, because I think it's a fantastic idea, and it does work, you know, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Willow.
Thank you, Willow. I'll come by with a flyer soon.
Does anybody else wish to just counsel at this time? Ira.
Yes, Ira Josephs, 499 West Jefferson Street. This is an issue that I just found out about, and maybe it's a question for Mr. Mattson for the Fair Trade Committee. I think we've gone back and forth a couple of times about the new signage that's going to happen in media, and we thought it was really important that it, it said, like, America's first fair trade town, and there had been something about a fair trade community. But are we on board for having it say, America's first fair trade town?
That's, that's correct. So we connected with our consultant, Merge, and they've revised the exact language to include that phrase.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Before we take a motion to adjourn, as, as Mr. Ewell was indicated earlier on, we will have executive session to discuss the litigation matter. We also, I believe, will have a property matter that we will discuss in executive session. So that having been said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
All in favor, please, to executive session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good night, folks. See you next month.